And call this regular meeting of the USD 431 School Board to order. Everyone present except Sarah and Tracy, who will be showing up later, they're at softball right now. Okay, before you, you have the agenda. Oh, sorry, do we have any changes to the agenda?
I do not have any changes.
I move to accept the agenda as presented.
Second.
Been moved in seconded, all in favor? Passes five zero. Review of the strategic plan.
And Becky brought up a good point. Well, we'll see if we can have this actually printed and posted in the, in the boardroom by the next board meeting. So, you know, just, just reminders, just to keep that front and center and keep us, keep us making decisions based on this.
Okay. Item five, opportunity for visitors. Do we have any visitors that want to speak tonight or not?
No visitors that are not already on the agenda.
Yep.
All right, we'll move on.
Unless there's anybody, any of you guys want to speak? Deja?
About anything.
That might be a can of worms we don't want to get into.
Yeah, reject your credit, do you need? All right, we'll move on to item six, the consent agenda. You have the minutes of the three, four, three, four Board of Education meeting and the minutes of the special meeting from February 19th, cash balance report and check journal. Anybody have any questions on any of that? If you had a chance to review it?
I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
A second.
It's been moved in seconded, all in favor? Passes five zero. Okay, we'll move on to old business. Item A, the press box bid approval.
And I'm going to actually turn it over to Jeremy Barts. Jeremy was here last month and kind of gave us a rundown on our work that we were doing at Lincoln. So he is here to answer any questions for that one, as well as any questions that you might have for the press box as well.
Awesome. So for starters, we'll cover the stuff over at Lincoln, kind of a recap from last month. Basically, over spring break, we went through and removed the sidewalk that was there. And there was several reasons for that. The first one was the sidewalk had sloped towards the building. The caulking at the expansion joint was a little rough. And so that's kind of what was the main causes of your water intrusion. And then thirdly, in the original contract drawings, it showed for a hydrophilic water stop, and we were questioning if that was there. We got that work knocked out over spring break. The sidewalk now has positive slope away from the building. The hydrophilic water stop was not there. And so we, beforehand, we did a one-hour water test, and we did get water to show up inside the building. After all that work was completed, we did a four-hour water test and nothing, nothing showed up. So, that issue should be solved. Friday of last week, we went through and painted the bottom panel, dressed it up as much as we could. That adhesive and the old expansion joint material made the wall look pretty rough. But, so, it looks good now.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, and we, we had talked about Brentwood builders, when they had originally come in to do the, the fix, they had cut a line. We'd, we'd talked about just painting up to that line. As we got that, as we got that metal flashing out of there and started looking at that, that cut was not straight. And so to just go to that line would have looked really bad. So they went ahead and went up a little bit farther. And so that, if you drive by there, it's a little bit higher than maybe what we would have talked about, but, but it looks really nice. It's a straight line. It's a good, good, solid line, so.
But that issue should be completely resolved, so.
Yep.
Any questions on that?
Appreciate it.
Yeah.
Thank you very much. Yeah.
I did send Patrick a complete report with all of our findings in there. I won't necessarily get into those right now if you guys want some more detail. I guess that.
Yep, I can provide that if you're, if you're interested, so.
As far as the press box, you know, we talked last month just about the driving factors of costs there. Specifically, to add the second level access was a really big piece to that with the elevation that we would be going off of the north side, right there off the highway. But then on the south side, having the existing bleachers, the track, access just gets really difficult. So that's your main cost driving factor there. Is there any questions on that that I might be able to, to answer? On anything regarding the press box?
So you have both option one, which is the full second story, and option two presentations. And so, you know, as, as, you know, looking at the money side of it, you know, I think with going ahead and expanding the, the rail around the top, I think our best bet is to go ahead and, and just go with option two. That would be a cost of forty-six, six seventy-five. With the donations from the Harris Family Foundation of approximately thirteen thousand, that would bring our cost to about thirty-three thousand, six seventy-five. And, you know, we can split that out of capital outlay in contingency, or we can, we, we have a healthy 1.5 million in our capital outlay that we could just take it all out of capital outlay and, and be satisfied there. Tyler and I have talked about it, too, in the fact that we've kind of gotten back in the rotation of doing about three rooms a year of carpet. We could delay that by a year and, and cover the majority of that cost as well. Because the three years of carpet, or the, the three rooms of carpet would be about thirty thousand. That's what I've got budgeted for at this point in time. So, so we can, you know, discussion. So my recommendation, we'd go to option two. Questions, comments for myself or Jeremy?
Just on the three rooms that we would be delaying by a year, like how old, like, are they, are they rooms that are just in regular routine maintenance, or are there some that are having issues?
No, they're, the, the actual three rooms that we would actually be looking at doing next summer have no issues in, in their carpet right now. So, so there's not, I mean, we're not, we're not delaying an issue. Their, their carpet is fine. It's just in the rotation that we, that we've kind of set up that we're moving forward with.
And is the roof and everything in that press box that we have now, is it pretty?
Yeah.
Solid? Because if we put the rail up, we're going to expect that more people will be standing on it to film and do that kind of thing. So, you don't see any issues with that or anything?
No, because right now you've got protective mats that go over the roof. And so that would, like if the roof expands, or the, excuse me, the guardrail expands, that would include inspan?
Okay.
Yep.
Protecting mats, so.
Any other questions?
Madam President, I would move that we proceed with option two for the press box. The bid per Barts Construction, a total of forty-six thousand, six hundred and seventy-five.
Okay, it's been moved in seconded, all in favor?
Sitting still.
All right.
Thank you.
We'll be in contact.
Thank you very much.
Sounds great. So we'll get in touch on timeframe and we'll plan on having it knocked out for football as well.
Okay, sounds good.
All right.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Madam President, Patrick, could I make one suggestion, just since we, is that under our threshold or over our threshold for needing multiple bids?
So, in, in terms of the multiple, multiple bids, we have put this to bid multiple times. We reached out to ATG, Mammoth, Geisel Construction, Vice Construction, and Barts Construction. And we, we actually published it on our website, and Barts Construction is the only company that's given us a bid.
Could I make a suggestion just to add us, like into the folder for the auditors next year, just a single source justification?
Yep, yep.
Just a list of what we did, so the auditors have it for next year.
Yep, absolutely.
Perfect.
Is that something you would normally do? I mean, add those comments? I mean, it's something you'd do. I just didn't know if that was kind of normal.
It is, and they, and, and we talk about that whenever the auditors are here. So they typically will ask, especially if it's over the threshold. So in terms of, oh, I'm trying to think of another project that we did that was over that, and we just absolutely had nobody that actually bid it. And so, except for, except for the people that actually did the work. So, that's, that's kind of been what's happened multiple times. You know, sometimes we run into, and, and I know with technology, you know, we run into that whenever it's, like when we're asking for apples, only apple can produce that. And so we, we typically will have those notes in there. So, yep.
So it's easier to do it when it's front of mind versus a year from now? Having had to do that several times myself.
Yep, so, absolutely. Thank you.
Thanks, Jeremy.
Thank you, Jeremy.
Thank you so much.
Okay, we'll move on to item B, schedule, just information?
Just information. I know Mr. Brumgarth had planned on being here. He obviously is still out at softball, too. His, he has sat down and talked to Jeremy, the schedule.
To Jordan.
Uh, Jordan, sorry.
That's okay.
Sorry, we just talked to Jeremy. Came over and talked to, to Jordan. The schedule is looking to be very much similar to the schedule that we had last year. The reason I actually had him put this on here is, is he had looked at a seven-hour schedule instead of an eight-hour schedule, and he, he deferred that simply because it wasn't going to provide the opportunities for electives for primarily sixth graders, is what he came down to. And so, him and Jordan, Mr. Brumgarth and Jordan are, are working through the process of updating the schedule that is already built, and then they're working on the pre-enrollment process as well. So, if he does get here, he might add a few things to that. But I know last year, that was kind of a, a change, that he'd made some changes. And so, the schedule that we have used for this year with minor tweaks are going to be basically the same. Music, band, those two classes have multiple opportunities for students to be in those if they choose to be in those. So, I know that was important from last year.
He did address that in his report to.
He did talk about it, okay.
Yeah, he did mention this.
Okay, thank you for pointing that out.
I know, I'd seen that, I just didn't remember where it was. Okay, item C, non-residence capacity numbers.
Okay, I'm going to start with the application. So if you're, if you're looking at the documents that are online, the application for non-resident student enrollment is a combination of the two applications that were presented last month. It took basically the good from both of those and combined them into all of the information that we would want to look into. We're not looking too far into it. We are providing us the opportunity to be able to look at all of the facets of the non-resident enrollment policy and be able to make an appropriate decision whether that, whether that grade level is above capacity or below capacity, and be able to make the decisions that are needed to, to get those students in here. There are, you know, it does ask, or it doesn't ask anything about IEP, doesn't ask any discriminatory information, and, and that is on purpose, obviously. One thing that it does ask is if there are siblings that are already attending in the district, which is a criteria that would bump them up on the list. So we do want to know that information. Then, you'll notice in, on page one and two, there are priority enrollment criteria questions, one through four, one through five. And then those come into play on page four, in terms of actually determining who starts out as being accepted before there's a lottery that takes place. So there are, there are some people, like students of employees, they automatically get let in. Students of homelessness, they get let in. So there's some prioritization that takes place. And on page four, there's kind of a checklist of how that prioritization, prioritization takes place. Then on page two and three, statements one through 10 are basically helping us in terms of, first, if a student is not in good standing, they have been suspended or expelled in another district. That, that then, we don't have to accept them. The other piece to it is, is if somebody lies on this application, then we can bump the application out. I mean, I'm not going to go around and knock on doors and verify addresses, but if there's something a little red flag-ish, then, then we, we will do some checking prior to us, us looking through this. So there are ten, ten different statements that go through each of those. And then the parent gives us the best way to contact them, email address, phone call, mail, because we will contact every single applicant whether they are accepted or not. And they will need to respond. If they are accepted, they will need to respond within 10 business days. Yep, 10 business days from that notification. If they, if we have exceeded our capacity and they don't respond within 10 business days, we'll move down the list to the next person. Does that, does that make sense to everybody? And then, then that page four is basically for me and administration and those of us in the office to be able to work our way down through each one of those checkmarks, and then be able to say, okay, we received the application on time or not on time, date of application, applicant that was contacted, applicant contacted how, so that we can keep track of each of that, applicant acknowledgement of receipt, non-resident power school pre-enrollment. And that, that then gives me, okay, they have been contacted, they have accepted, and now they have started the process in Power School. So, I just tried to create a checklist for myself and our office staff to be able to make it, okay, we have gotten them enrolled. That's the point. One of the biggest things that, that we have talked about in administrators' groups, as well as superintendent groups, is the application can be accepted between June 1st and June 30th. If an application comes in after June 30th, then we have a little bit more flexibility in terms of whether or not we accept that student. And I'll address that here in just a little bit. So, the statute is very clear, and the advisement is very clear, that none of the dates can be altered. So the June 1st through June 30th is where, is where everything will be held, and then we'll move forward from there. And then we have to review and accept or deny by July 15th. And so that'll all be documented as well. And that's the reason why the, the checkmarks on the, on the end of this document. We will only be accepting paper applications. Does that make sense? So, we, we will post it on our website. We will post all of the instructions on our website, but we will only be accepting paper applications that come back to the district office. Just trying to make it, for me, simple this year. So, you know, just, just, I feel like that that's going to be our best bet. And then we'll, we'll have some, some procedures that will take place here in the office whenever we get those. Any questions about the application thus far?
I think there's one edit that needs done on the second one for the military student. Instead of military student, military dependent.
It is actually stated in the statute, military student.
So the student has to be in the military?
No, no. I, I did not write the statute. I did not write the statute, but the statute reads military student. Okay. So, I can, I mean, I can sure make that change if that is something that is, is something that you would like to see.
Mr. Kratus, I have one. On your administrative determination and reasoning under denied, do we need to add check boxes to deny due to falsehood on application and deny to not in good standing?
No, we'll add all of that to the, to the bottom.
Okay.
Yeah.
So should we just, okay, yeah, okay.
I mean, I'll just, you know, the, that fourth page has a lot of space for notes, and we'll write as many notes as we need to, to, to keep track.
Perfect.
May I can write a note section?
So if you're accepting just paper copies, will you be, like, will somebody be putting this in, like, electronic copies? You know, I don't know how you're keeping track, like Excel, or is there somewhere where you can store these instead of just having the paper copies?
I, I mean, as, as we get those, and then after we accept all of them, we can scan them all in.
Okay.
And do, and do a file that way.
Just figured, I mean.
Yeah, no.
Paper copies, you know, however things you can.
Yeah, we'll, we'll end up scanning. We'll probably scan them multiple times. We'll scan them probably when we receive them, just so in case. But I mean, there's going to be like a singular file that they'll go in up until the deadline. And, you know, we, we, we may even go so far as to, you know, have a drop box that we have outside. Just, I mean, we want people to have accessibility to be able to do it. But the other side of it, too, is, is a lot of times electronic files can, I mean, I mean, oh, I emailed it to you. Well, I never received that. I don't want to, I don't want to get into that.
No, I understand wanting to accept the paper copies.
Yeah, so, so, yeah, electronically, we'll, and then, and then ultimately, after all of the checkmarks are, are, are done, and all of the, all of the blanks are filled in, then we'll, you know, scan them again. And, you know, Jordan will end up with those that we accept, and then we'll have a file. Jordan will probably end up having a file of those that we don't accept. Because ultimately, I mean, if somebody chooses not to come, then, then we have the opportunity to, you know, accept them later at that point in time, so. Other questions, good questions. This is new for everybody in the entire state, so, so keep asking, because it brings up good, good answers and good questions from you guys.
The other question I have, just on your process, for folks that are receiving it, that are mailing in applications, or that, just a suggestion, take it or leave it if it's too much of a hassle. It might be nice if that June 30th mark, or like July 1, or whenever is appropriate to send a confirmation, your application has been received.
Yep, that's a great idea.
So, so that if somebody, I, I know as a parent, if I was submitting a form by mail, then.
Yeah.
Or even just a phone call confirmation, hey, we received your application, we'll follow up.
Yep.
But we got it.
Yeah.
We got, we got.
Upon, upon receipt, just make a quick phone call. We did get this, you know.
Yeah, or just enter all the email addresses and do a confirmation email.
Yep.
Like, make it, make it administratively as less of a pain as possible.
Right.
Yep.
I know if I was a nervous parent, I'd appreciate that.
Yep, absolutely. That's a good, that's a good, good point. Any other questions or comments or suggestions? And I cannot take any credit for this. This is, this is the hard work of Chad Higgins from ESDAC. You know, education's really good about Bigburn and stealing stuff, so he's done a tremendous amount of work to put this together. So, other questions, I just want to...
Is this pretty much what all, all districts are using, the same type of form?
So there, so there was a, an application that he put together that was not the Legalese, and then KASB put together one. And so that's, that's why I felt like, you know, there's still a lot of questions in terms of special services, transportation, there, I mean, there, there are a lot of questions as to how this is going to work in the day-to-day. This is a process that has been done my entire administrative career, and there, there's never been a statute that's dictated how it works. And so now we have to not only balance the statute, but balance the day-to-day of, of how it's really going to work. And so, so, so that's kind of where he was coming from, the day-to-day, and then the, the KASB was coming from the Legalese. So, the 10 down at the bottom on pages two and three kind of, kind of are a blend of that, those two things. So, sorry, that was kind of a long-winded answer. Okay, so I am hearing military dependent, including that note section and the confirmation of receipt. So, any other, any other comments or questions? And then I would bring your attention to the proposed enrollment numbers. Again, Chad Higgins did an amazing job of putting together multiple charts to address many things. So, table 1-1, under enrollment, projection, determination, is actually our enrollment right now in every single class. This is from Power School. This is accurate within a week or so. And then, table 1-2 is our historical numbers per building. You can see, you know, we've had a, a little fluctuation, typically to the negative between half a percent, all the way up to 4.6% decrease, you know, depending on the year. And then, table 1-3, so table 1-3 and 1-2, or 1-4 are what you are actually making your motion on this evening. And so, administratively, we sat down and, and the administer, the administrators had already communicated with their building leadership team, individual classroom teachers, groups of classroom teachers to really talk through this process and, and look at, so, our numbers, I shifted our numbers one year. So, this year's juniors are listed as, as table 1-3 seniors, and so on and so forth on down the line. And then, it is looked at as to what our projected numbers would be. And then, table 1-4 is our projected numbers that we would take from out of the district. Now, I would, I would say, for those of you that maybe are not, you know, educators, the numbers in kindergarten through third grade look very small in terms of capacity of numbers that we would accept. The reason for that is because we typically keep our class sizes pretty low in those, in those grades anyway. The reason for that is because we typically keep our class sizes pretty low in those, in those grades anyway. But the other thing too is that, I mean, we, we had 10 kindergarten students show up between August 1 and August 15 this year. So, I mean, it's really, and, and eight of those, correct me, right, eight of those were in district. Kindergarteners? Five. So half of them were in district. So if we would be looking at this in terms of like this coming year, we would have had to, we would have had to accept those five students, which would have already put us over what we considered our capacity. Plus, we would have been allowed to take over two more of those. So we don't, I mean, we have a very transient population. And so one of the reasons that we've kept our numbers as low as we have in grades one through three is because of that. The second piece is one, one student can make a huge impact in the lower grades as well. More so than typically in older, older grade levels. Okay? And then we did take into consideration some of the actual individual classes. So like, uh, we decided to go ahead and, and limit fifth grade because this year's fourth grade tends to have a little bit higher, higher needs, maybe at-risk students or special education students or students that, that need more attention in the classroom. We have, we have, we have kept those numbers, you know, pretty low through grades five. Six through 12, you know, obviously nine and 10, grades nine and 10 next year were, are our two big classes. Uh, so those numbers did drop a little bit, a little bit from six through eight. 11 is our smallest class. You know, we did talk about that. If, if five was, was that number and we did feel like that that was an appropriate number. And then grade 12, we went back and forth on that one as well. One of the concerns was we get a 12th grader that has seven credits. Now, you may think that that's not, that's real, that's not realistic. That has happened. So, we get a student with seven credits as a senior, there is no way that student is gonna graduate. So now, now, when we look at our graduation rates, that student, even though we've had that student for less than nine months, negatively affects our graduation rates. Does that make sense to everybody? So there, there was multiple factors that were put into these numbers. Number one, I don't know that we're gonna have a lot of movement anyway within Barton County. But we don't know. We've not, none of us have ever done this before. So, so these are the capacity numbers that we would accept for non-resident students between June, with the application process between June 1 and June 30th, with the idea of letting these students know by July 15th.
And once we vote on these numbers, we can't.
Are they adjustable every year?
We can adjust them every year. We would vote on them every year.
This is kind of a crapshoot going into.
Pretty much.
As I say, so Mr. Kratus, so the, this total capacity, so this includes the required, this includes the required admit students.
No.
Okay, so required, the three, four, five would be a separate category?
Um, yeah, three, four, five would be a separate category.
So this would only be non-military, non-homeless, non-custodial?
Yep.
Okay, so like someone that was just applying wouldn't get bumped out because?
Yes. Yep.
But based on this year's experience, we would be turning students away?
Poten- potentially, yes.
Okay.
Yep. Now, I mean, it basically came down to Murphy's Law. We decided to have TK in our two sections of kindergarten because we had a movement in staff. And so Murphy's Law dictated that we got all of our kids in kindergarten. So, you know, a couple of years ago, when the sixth graders, I think maybe, were at like 75, that's typically when a new student would come in, that's where, that's typically, I mean, I hate to say it that way, but that, I mean, it just kind of, it just kinda happens that way sometimes. Um, so I, I'm not saying it's gonna happen again. I'm just saying that, you know, over years of experience, that typically is what ends up happening. Um, so yes, we would have turned students away. Uh, we would have, if, if everything would have been followed, then we would have gone through the lottery and we would have turned students away. And, and please understand, those students that we would, we would have turned away still have their local district, right? Okay? So, I mean, no, nobody's being ostracized from public education. It is just, they are choosing to come here and they don't live in our district. If they live in our district, then we are, we are going to educate them to the best of our ability.
Do we have any idea, and could I ask a question of Mrs. Walker? So, do you have any idea on upcoming siblings? Because if we only have two slots for kindergarten, do we have more than that siblings, younger siblings and people in our preschool program? That would be kicked, that would be, well, no, if they're in preschool, they would count as one of our students, right? So this would only be?
Yep.
Non-attending preschoolers?
Yeah, and they have a sibling already, they are.
They would be higher priority, but not a guarantee.
They would be an automatic. Okay.
Um, I know, I mean, I know a few could earn us a lot of incoming siblings, but.
But if they're currently enrolled in preschool, they are consider, we are considering them our student?
Yeah, I mean, we can, we can do that. That, that's where, again, I mean, this has been something that has been done for 20-plus years. And three and four-year-olds are not addressed in the statute, but kindergarten to 12th grade is.
I just wanna make sure that like if we've got three and four-year-olds or TK students.
If they are, if they are in our buildings now, we, we have written JBCC that they are our kids.
Perfect, okay. I'm just like, only having two slots for kindergarten and then like younger siblings?
Yeah.
Has me a little worried, but.
And, and I mean.
You don't think that that's.
And the reason, I mean, the reason that we're looking at two slots for kindergarten is that between TK and three sections of kindergarten, we're looking at 68 kids. So, so I mean, we're looking at a pretty good-sized class anyway. I mean, with the way that TK works and, and, and those types of things. So, we're looking at 68 kids, so 70 was, was kinda that, that's about as far as we wanna go.
And we have, I mean, every year we have kids who attend our preschool but don't, or attend our TK but don't attend our kindergarten. Um, I mean, this year I know that we'll have a few that have been, have been in our TK that won't go on kindergarten.
Okay. Okay, so there's a little bit of flux.
Yep, and, and I, but we specifically, I specifically asked Chad Higgins, because he's been talking to, to, to districts all over the state. And he said that kindergarten is the one that nobody knows how it's gonna work. I mean, e- everybody's having questions about kindergarten. So, uh, because you really have nothing to base it around, other than if you have a pre, a, a three and four-year-old program, so. Other questions about tables 1, 3, and 1, 4? And these two tables will be what we publish by May 1. Does that make sense to everybody?
So, do, okay, because we have the, we don't have a technical table that is considered capacity. So we've got enrollment projection and non-enrollment capacity. So is the assumption that those two numbers added together equals capacity?
Uh, no, the capacity is.
Is enrollment, is table 1.3?
1.4 is the capacity of non-resident districts that we will accept.
Okay, so we don't have to include in here a capacity for grade by statute, just for non-resident capacity?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. Now, we don't have, I mean, I mean, if a kid moves into our district, they're ours and we will educate them. The only number, the only number we have to limit is the, the non-resident.
Okay.
The non-resident number.
And once we publish it, that's what we have to stick with for the year, correct? So even if we had a large family move in with, you know.
Right.
Six kids and three of them are.
But if they move in, they're our kids and so we still have their capacity.
We still have to have the two non-resident students.
Yep.
Okay.
Yep. Yep. So then, um, on to page three, a couple of items to just point out. The district will accept non-resident student enrollment applications between June 1, June 30th. Application may not request information regarding ethnicity and national origin, gender, income level, disabilities, English language proficiency and measures. Those are all, those are all things that shouldn't really make the determination anyway. Those are things they don't have control over. So we, we would not ask that anyway, okay? On all eligible non-resident students who complete the application process, the district's guidelines will accept as students if capacity exists and if they are not currently suspended or expelled from a current school district. When the number of non-resident enrollment applications exceeds school building program or grade level capacity, the district will randomly select a student through a confidential lottery process conducted by the superintendent or designated between July 1 and July 15th. Districts may contact the students and their families during the lottery process to confirm enrollment location and conference, confirm acceptance. A non-resident student current district may be required to confirm good standing prior to acceptance. All eligible non-resident students who complete, completed the application process following the district guidelines, but were not selected, will be notified and informed of the reason they are not accepted for enrollment. And then just a few housekeeping items in relationship to what happens after July 30, or June 30th. A non-resident student will not be accepted when enrollment requirements, the acquisition of additional district resources, including but not limited to the, the personal technology, hardware, software, square footage, physical equipment, transportation services or contracted services. Acceptance of non-resident students will not be based on ethnicity. Again, all through those different things, FAP is Free Appropriate Public Education. Uh, I was gonna add that in there instead of using the acronym. So I will add that before I publish this. If a non-resident student is accepted in the district and later found to have an IEP, that includes transportation between the resident assigned school. The district is not required to provide transportation outside the district boundaries. That is still a sticking point within the legislature and the courts. We're, we're hoping that there will be legislation that will clear this up. But if a student, if a student is in Russell and requires transportation, we are not required to provide that transportation under federal law. Okay? That, it, it's, it comes, federal law is going to trump state law every single time on that instance because of, because of the established IDEA statutes. And so that's why that statement is in there. It's not trying to be harsh about anything or discriminate against somebody with an IEP, but we wanna be really clear that that federal IDEA is going to trump the state statute. Non-resident students may apply for entrance into USD 431 if capacity exists after the deadline of June 30th. So if we still have capacity and they, they're like, oh my gosh, I forgot to turn in my application, we will require them to fill out the exact same application. We will go through a process after we have, after we have gone through all of the applications that we received before June 30th. Non-resident students who apply after June 30th deadline will be required to fill out the application for non-resident students and selected for a limited basis. So again, it becomes a little different rules after June 30th. But again, most of our policy, our JBCC policy is already stated that we, we will look at, we will look at attendance, we will look at grades, we will look at behavior. We will look at three things that they absolutely have control over. And that's what we've done as long as we've been doing this. So, we'll look at the things that they have control over to make the determination whether or not they would be a good fit for us. So.
And the statute doesn't spell out any deadlines, lottery requirements, any of that after the June 40th?
Nope. Nope.
Any other questions? And I'll move to adopt the student enrollment, enrollment projection in table 1.3 and the non-resident enrollment seats in grades in schools identified in table 1.4. Seconded, all in favor?
Thank you.
Okay, move on to item D, approval of the 2024-25 OPA contract.
Um, we have our contract with OPA already, um, that is a five-year contract, but this is your five of five. This is a formality. We, we make this acceptance because OPA does have the opportunity to, to raise prices on an annual basis. And KSDE will then make the final say as to whether or not they accept the increases. Uh, you'll notice on these prices per meal, you know, in some, some areas, we had increases primarily in our regular student lunches and student breakfast. We did have some increases, whereas in our, in items 10 and 11, I believe it is, which is our summer food service program, uh, we did see some decreases. And I believe a lot of that is due to staffing and the, and the length of time that we, we do our summer food service program. Uh, Denise has done a good job of making it actually economical. And then we do limit the amount of time that we do it, simply because after June 30th, when, um, uh, the rec program shuts down, we go from about 60 kids showing up to like two kids showing up. And then we had been partnering with GPS and GPS has chosen to not partner with us this year on the summer food service. It's easier for them to just to continue on and not for a month shut down their food service and then pick it back up after July 1. So that's why they've chosen not to, to jump into ours. So, so I would recommend that we, we approve this year's contract with OPA. And then we will be putting this to bid for food service for next spring's approval.
I move to approve the 2024-25 contract with the Oprah, OPA presented, sorry.
Well, Oprah's coming.
We won't need this, she can pay.
She can just pay for it.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Moved in seconded, all in favor? Sorry, I didn't hear you, Justin.
No, you're fine. I kinda threw it in there.
If Oprah, Oprah was coming.
I know, right? Okay, item eight, new business, A, out-of-state travel approval.
And I think we have representatives from our robotics program as well as FCC LA to, to talk to you guys a little bit about out-of-state travel. Come on up, Mr. Anders. Come on up, Mr. Anders.
All right. We got a few fine gentlemen here that are requesting, uh, for out-of-state travel and some financial help with housing and, um, travel expenses. Uh, first off, before we get into that, I wanna have a huge shout out for this year's HMS Robotics. We took seven teams to the state and all seven made it to the finals out of twelve teams, out of the whole entire state. So they really worked hard and these gentlemen right here, um, they qualified for the World Robotics Tournament in Dallas, Texas. That's where we will be going. Um, this year it was extremely difficult. Normally three teams get to qualify. Um, but this year only one team, so they had to win the excellence award, which looks at their skills, runs, their teamwork, uh, runs, judges, notebooks, a whole bunch of stuff. And, um, they did an excellent job. They worked extremely hard this year. Um, can you guys go ahead? I'm gonna have these gentlemen explain the game quickly, all right? So give us a rundown. What's that game this year?
And introduce yourselves.
Uh, Joey Valentino.
And wait, Britt.
And Jackson Tulu.
Go Joey, tell us what they do.
So the game is basically, so there's a big field and there's blocks, there's green blocks, purple blocks and red blocks. We get the green blocks and then there's towers like this. There's three towers. There's two towers on one side and then there's another tower. And then there's a supply zone with a bunch of, uh, green and purple blocks in them. And we try to score all the green blocks.
And the towers?
All right. And so do you guys know what are we gonna do in Dallas? What's some of the things that we've talked about? What, what are we gonna do? Well, what's our fun thing that we could do in Dallas?
Oh, I forgot.
It's called activate?
Yeah, activate. It's like a laser tag and it's got all these different games and stuff.
Hmm. So we normally do one thing in Dallas, um, and it's activate, like he said. It's, it's kinda like an arcade. Almost reminds me of what they have in Salina in the mall, except it's nothing but lasers and lights. It's really cool. Um, and then of course they're going to compete against eight hundred teams, right, from around the world. Um, we'll also be seeing in a verbo, okay? Um, the verbo is, um, one thousand two hundred and sixty-one dollars. Um, and so we have raised about three thousand dollars and the total expense to go is about five thousand dollars. So we are just kinda looking for help, um, with the housing and, and obviously travel, so. Anything you guys want to add? Nothing?
So how many years in a row have you guys gone and or qualified in a row?
So in a row, this will make it twice because of COVID.
Right, but you qualified.
Yeah, we've qualified, yeah. But, um, we've actually gone, uh, five out of, uh, excuse me, four out of five years. So, yeah, we're, we're really proud of our program.
Awesome job.
So it's the three of them, you and parents? Are any parents going? Are you gonna have anybody else or is it?
I, I believe there are some parents that are going. Um, we're gonna have, uh, Mrs. Lauren, uh, from the middle school. She's the assistant coach. She's also coming with us.
The parents aren't like coming with us? They're not in our verbo?
They'll be in.
They'll be close if you mess up though.
And the, the reason for the verbo is because, um, I mean, the hotel that's closest to it is well over two hundred dollars a night, um, each night. And, and, and I mean, you know, they've done a great job over the, of the past several years of, you know, taking food, you know, eating breakfast there. Um, there's opportunities to eat. I mean, obviously, Mr. Brungard can speak to this too, but there's opportunities to eat there on the site, but, you know, breakfast and dinner is, is usually a different issue. Um, and, and figuring those things out. So I know when, when my son, Grady, went, um, you know, the verbo was very nice inside. Outside was a little questionable. Um, but I mean, they, they did a great job of taking care of the kids and, and last year the verbo was in a great neighborhood. And I think this year they, they've selected another one that's a good neighborhood as well. So, so. And we do have money set aside, um, you know, through title funds. We, we've been able to support this the last several years. So, so.
Yeah, I know we've done that in the past, so. So what do you think?
I'll be getting with him about what his budget is.
Yeah. I mean, is everybody in agreement to give them?
Well, we can do, yeah, there's a motion for both of them together.
Okay.
So, yep. Thank you, guys.
Congratulations.
Yes. All right, FCC LA? It's the first time he hasn't had something to say.
So me and.
You wanna introduce yourselves? Introduce yourselves.
So I'm Brady Stevenson.
I'm AJ Thurman.
Uh, we have both qualified for the national conference in Seattle, Washington from June twenty-eighth to July third. Um, and we come up here to request that we have a people to go this summer. Um, I've qualified to go as a judge as well as, um, I will be participating in a star event, which talks about respectful communication between students and teachers and how we can use that in today's society. And then if I do not make it on with my star event, I will be judging other star events throughout this competition, I guess.
And then, uh, I, I applied to be on the na, the state peer ed, education team, which talks about the SEC national programs and my program is FACS, which stands for Families Acting for Community Traffic Safety. And so what we do, which is during our normal, um, year, is that we go around the state giving presentations about our national program. And this is something that is almost required out of me for this, for my positions to go on to nationals, to, to go to workshops and sessions to help train me for this. And so we're just basically asking for approval for us to go on to Seattle.
And Mrs., uh, uh, there's a presentation in your, in your board notes from, uh, Mrs. Reisner. And Mrs. Reisner and I have become, been communicating back and forth about, uh, district support for them to go as well. So.
Any questions?
Good job.
Thank you. Good luck.
I'll move to approve, uh, the request for state travel for FCC LA and the middle school robotics as presented. And then you'll give us the totals.
Yep.
Good job, you guys. Okay, let's see. Item B, KASB membership approval.
I believe, um, you all received a membership packet last month, uh, just taking a ti, look at that. Um, KASB is a great organization, um, you know, really tuned in to what's going on. And, I mean, they, they've done a phenomenal job of adapting and changing their approaches as well. So I would recommend we continue our membership with KASB.
I move to approve the continued membership in KASB and with KASB legal.
Also seconded. Been moved and seconded, all in favor? Passes seven zero. Item C, contribution to the rec to help resurface tennis courts.
So every five years, um, they've been able to update and, and keep the tennis courts, um, resurfaced. And that has really helped in, um, the underlying of the concrete. Correct, correct me if I'm wrong at any time, Carrie, um, but I mean, our. Yeah, it's helping to preserve the concrete. And so, um, so to continue that, you know, the rec has, has started to set aside money. Or you can stay if you're, if you're really interested. So. Kayden's working on extra, extra credit here. So, um, so when Carrie went to bid, um, on this whole process for the rec, um, as a representative, um, to, you know, of the tennis department, um, he discovered that the bids were about twice as much or over twice as much as they were five years ago. So, uh, we are the primary users, um, of the tennis courts. And so I, I do believe that we should, um, contribute to, um, that, to, to continue that facility, um, with the, with the quality facility that we, we have there and, and continue to update that. Um, interesting fact, um, when those courts were put in originally, the Ed Foundation had, had put in a sizable contribution to, to actually construct those. So I just found out the other day and thought that was interesting, so.
So that ground and those facilities are owned by the rec then?
No. So, um, so the ground and the facility, okay, so, so.
Sorry.
They are insured, okay, I know that one for sure. They are insured by the city.
Okay.
The facility is technically owned by the city. The rec is maintaining them. So, um, so I mean, the rec has been asked or told to maintain those. So.
So the city.
Yeah, is the city gonna?
No.
I don't believe so.
No.
Do they get asked to?
Yes.
But they still insure it?
They do insure it.
So they pay the deductible on the insurance and the premium and that's the city's contribution?
Which is probably.
And the lights?
And the lights.
And the lights, yeah. Oh, really? Okay, I didn't look last night, so, okay.
Can we get the city involved to come?
I can ask. I, I can ask, but I, yeah, I can ask.
Cause it's public use, it's not locked off from everybody. Which is good.
Yep. And, and there has been somebody there every single night for the last three weeks at least.
Say, there's always people there when they gotta walk the dogs.
So, yeah, so, so I can ask. I mean, we can table this. I mean, you know, the, we're gonna, we're gonna do it. I mean, I can ask the city and see what contribution, uh, we can agree to up to eleven-three. Um, and then go from there.
Yeah.
So.
So we'll table that one for now.
You okay with that?
I was gonna say, how long are your bids going for?
Oh, they, I mean, the rec has already approved, have accepted their bids, so.
I've already told them, we're not doing this till the end of July, uh, probably July before they come in and actually do the work.
So this is just.
The rec has done the. They've already approved the bidding process. Yep.
So we're just doing our contribution?
Yep. As the, as the primary user, so.
Do we need an official motion to table?
Let's do.
Okay, so, uh, Madam President, I would move to table the motion on the contribution, uh, to the Wozington Recreation Commission to resurface the tennis courts, uh, pending a discussion with the city of Wozington on potential contributions.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to table what she said. That's a lot. All in favor?
You're gonna need to stay after the meeting and go back over that.
Get all the key words in.
Right, no.
All right, item D, fitness center usage during district activities discussion.
So, um, just a little history on that one. Uh, during COVID, when there was no people allowed in activities, um, I believe the board, correct me if I'm wrong, I believe the board decided that, um, with limited capacity at activities in the, in the activity center, that we would close the fitness center, uh, at that time. Does that, does that sound about right? And then, um, then as we have come out of that, um, we have just continued to, um, keep the fitness center closed. A couple reasons why, um, is that it had historically been kind of a free, uh, way into the games, um, that people would go to the fitness center, say they are going to work out, may work out and then end up in the stands, um, for the activity that was going on during, um, the, um. So we did have discussion. Uh, I think several of you have been approached, uh, by an individual. Um, and then most of the rec, um, board has been approached by an individual as well to, um, uh, to see about changing this. So we, um, the rec asked me to bring it to you. They did say that they would, um, uh, staff it if, if we as the USD four thirty-one board, uh, chose to open that back up, so.
What are their thoughts on opening it? Do they have a preference?
Um, I, I think their preference is that it's something that they don't have to staff, um, but, um, they're, they, either way, I mean, they didn't see a preference, so. They've chosen not to. They've chosen not to now since we're not, since we're not opening up the fitness center. So, and I did provide to you the numbers, um, this past year, including volleyball, all winter activities, winter jam, I mean, the winter activities, uh, and winter jam, substate basketball and the middle school activities. There was a total of thirty-one times that we, we closed the, um, fitness center, um, out of a hundred and eighty-four possible days.
I mean, it, it doesn't look like that many days out of a hundred and four, eighty-four, but if you take the winter activities, winter jam, substate, I mean, they're all kind of.
Well, and it's, it's during the winter where it's probably utilized a lot more than, you know, when it's cold out and stuff. Have we ever had problems with, you know, vandalism or kids just going in there and goofing off? I mean, during, when it was open during activities?
Cause I think even Chris had talked about actually staffing it like, like in the actual fitness center. So there would be somebody there to, to kinda kick kids.
Cause it would just be the fitness center. It wouldn't be the racquetball board.
No, it's just the fitness.
I feel like if they're willing to staff it, I feel like we should offer it.
Okay.
We can always revisit it too, if it doesn't, if it causes a problem.
How do you keep those people from attending a game that they didn't, you know, most people have to pay to get in? They're going in, they're coming out and they're watching a game for free. So I think the question is how do we police that? Or are we talking enough people that it's really gonna make that much difference?
Exactly. I mean, there might not be enough people to really.
Talking one or two people. If you're talking one or two people, is it really even worth it to police it?
Well, then you're gonna have somebody that has to actually confront that person.
Right, exactly. Exactly, so, I mean, I would be okay to try to open it and we can always, like Julie said, readdress it.
Change your mind.
Later down the line.
And, and especially if the commission's willing to come up with kind of the policy procedures for how they think that it would be better to organize that.
And if they see that it's underutilized, then, I mean, there's no reason to pay somebody to be there if one person is coming for thirty minutes.
There's a, a sign-in sheet, so you'll have your number whether it satisfies your staff cost.
Good amount of people will come in the afternoon.
Yeah.
But it's not, it's not, it's only closed during the times of the event, right?
Correct.
So that could be from.
Typically from four till.
Right.
I think typically they're shutting down from four to close. So, I mean, this is a new business item. I mean, no, no action needs to be taken. We don't have any activities in that gym until next fall. So, I mean, we can, we can bring this back up again. Um, you know, if you guys wanted to ask questions of myself or others, um, you know.
I think it's, it's probably easier to have it open than close it when it's needed than to close it and try to open it up later on.
Pretty much an agreement then to go ahead and just have it open as long as they'll staff it and.
Yeah.
Okay, we'll move on to item nine, reports. This is Walker. Sorry.
You're good. All right, no, okay. Madam President, do we need an official motion on that business item or is that something that we have to?
It's up to you. Probably wouldn't hurt.
Okay.
I mean, because it is a change, so.
Okay, so, yeah.
Okay, so Madam President, I move to, um, recommend to the Hoyington Recreation Commission that the fitness center be open during USD, during district activities pending their ability to staff.
Okay, a second. It's been moved and seconded, all in favor. This is seven zero. Okay, sorry.
No, you're good. I should've just waited.
No, 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 you're fine.
Uh, good evening, first of all. Um, so we're starting like the extremely busy part of our school year. Um, we had student-led conferences for our kindergarten, first grade right before spring break. Um, we had ninety-three percent in attendance. Um, so tomorrow is Assistant Principals Day. So happy Assistant Principals Day to Mr. Flowers tomorrow, cause I'll probably forget tomorrow. So happy little one week. Um, and then, uh, the third is, um, Para and AIDS Day. So we celebrate them at Rosedale. Um, this year we have a special little treat for them, so. Um, and then Friday, April nineteenth, Natalie Unruh, uh, from the Wetland Center comes out and she'll visit with the first grade. Um, I believe the last time she brought a possum. It was like the cutest thing ever. It was so adorable. Um, so the kids always enjoy when she comes. And then, um, Wednesday, this one's a lot of happy people day. Why? Wednesday, April twenty-fourth is then Secretary's Day, so, um, we'll of course celebrate our Secretary Pam. Uh, we also have an early release day at noon on Wednesday, April twenty-fourth. Uh, staff will finish up some resilience training and I believe admin are all going to ESDEC for KISA. Um, and then, let's see, April twenty-fourth and twenty-fifth, we will have our preschool and TK parent teacher conferences from three-thirty to seven-thirty. And then also on April twenty-fifth, because I'm already there, we're gonna have, um, our preschool, uh, pre-registration. We're changing the title this year to kind of go along with how it looks in Power School. Um, so we will have our preschool pre-registration and this is for any new threes and new fours to our district. Um, and that will be on April twenty-fifth from three-thirty to seven. So Jordan and I have been working on how to make this easy, but, you know, we're trying. So we're gonna give it a shot at doing it online, just having everything, an iPad or something there for parents to fill out right there. Um, like I said, we're gonna give it a shot. It could absolutely flop, but I feel like Jordan and I are both risk takers, so we're willing to give it a try. Um, and then, um, we will do our pass bridge testing the last week of April. So, quickly approaching the end. So, any questions? No, all right. Thank you.
Thank you.
If you guys didn't sit in the back all the time. So Lincoln will begin state assessments this week. Second grade is starting up tomorrow. Uh, Ms. Haxton has worked hard to plan out as a little pep assembly to start tomorrow morning to get everybody excited and then in the mood to, uh, do really well on their assessments. So thank you to her for taking time to do that. We've officially concluded this spring flower sales and will have pickups beginning on the twenty-sixth and twenty-seventh. Uh, there will be some extra flowers available. So if somebody didn't get some, feel free to come by on those days to pick what's left. Uh, thank you to Ms. Carrie for sorting out through all of that and organizing all the sales and to, uh, Ms. Stephanie for helping, organizing the actual slips to make the process of picking up go nice and quick. Um, Lincoln celebrated its third quarter honor roll assembly. We had a great attendance at that and it went very well. So thank you to all the staff for helping make it so smooth. Um, otherwise, that's pretty much Lincoln in a nutshell right now. Uh, for middle school athletics, you heard from robotic, robotics earlier this evening, uh, they're building up their anticipation for their trip to Dallas to complete it, compete at Worlds. Congratulations to Mr. Andrews and Ms. Lauren for all the hard work on leading this group this year. Um, like they said, one top group in the state, so that's awesome for them. Uh, lots of events in the month of April. About every day of the month, there's gonna be something. So, especially with tennis. Tennis has a lot of events. Uh, track will kick off tomorrow in Nickerson, so we're, we're gonna see what they can put together and then what we can grow by, you know, uh, May sixth. All spring sports are off. Uh, last, about two weekends ago, I got the pleasure of attending the KIA AAA conference, so thank you guys for sending me to that. That's the athletic directors, uh, conference where we got to hear different ways that we can continue to improve our coaches along with, help them grow and just make sure their programs are following great policies that will build great programs. So thank you guys for that opportunity. Any questions? Uh, flowers sales, they are always asking for help. So definitely call, uh, Ms. Carrie and she will put you to work. Anybody else? All right. If you get bored on the eleventh, we have our first home track meet. We, we would always.
When we're looking for help.
Request for help. We always need help with that. Thank you, guys.
We posted yours, but if you wanna come up and speak, go ahead, come on up.
Good evening. Uh, if I stop talking mid-sentence, cause I got about four percent of my battery, it might go out.
You shut down at four?
I'll just go freeze. Uh, first of all, thanks for, uh, giving my, our robotics team the opportunity to be, to be heard and, and seen. They do a great job. Um, you know, some of you may be asking why they want, want, want some help with the funds for doing something fun in Dallas, but after spending two days in a house with middle school kids, it's money well spent, believe me. So with that said, uh, you know, once we get back into, go back to school tomorrow, um, you know, we're gonna get back into swinging things after our Easter and spring breaks, um, and start getting ready for the win, uh, the end of the year. Uh, I've been working with Jordan to get the schedule in place for next year. Uh, we discussed going to a seven-hour day. I don't know how much was talked about earlier.
Yeah, just a little bit.
But, uh, by doing that, it, it really helps with our, uh, interventions and, and enrichment for our upper level kids, but it takes away a lot of flexibility we have in the schedule with electives and things like that. So without knowing exactly how that would play out, we went, we're gonna stay with an eight-hour schedule for this year and just live, would get, get creative in how we're gonna, uh, incorporate those interventions and, uh, enrichment activities for, for our kids. Um, uh, cause I, I don't wanna just do it, just put something together and it's, and it, and it doesn't work out and, and it's not good for our kids. So I wanna make sure, um, I have more time to prepare to see if that seven-hour day is something that is, is really beneficial for our kids. Um, and then next week, we start our state testing. Uh, we'll, we'll do reading on Monday and math on Tuesday and then have, uh, makeups for anybody who misses, uh, on Wednes, we'll do that Wednesday, Thursday and Friday. Uh, and then after that, um, we'll start gearing up for, for the end of the year and, you know, which includes, um, our Cardinal Action Council Community Cleanup Day where we go around the, the town and clean up different the parks and things like that. Um, we'll, we also have fifth and sixth grade, our sixth and seventh grade assembly, uh, and awards day, uh, our fifth grade introduction where the fifth grade comes up and, you know, we divide them into groups and we give them to other buildings and kind of have them go through the, the changing of classes and things like that, so they get, get an idea what that's all about. Uh, and then finally ending up with, uh, our eighth grade promotion on the tent. So that's what we got coming up in a nutshell. So any, any questions on that? Laura?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
While he's coming up, I will echo what Mr. Brumgarth said about, um, getting them out of the house and letting them do something fun, cause they are actually competing about ten hours a day when they're, when they're actually at the convention center. So, so it's, so it, yeah, so I mean, it, it's a well-deserved break whenever they do go do something. Sorry, Mr. Mason.
March seventh, we had our student-led conferences and we had a ninety-three percent attendance by parents. Um, I just wanted to talk about how important it is to get those parents into the building. Before we started doing student-led conferences, we'd averaged about forty-five percent attendance in the spring. So, um, having the, the scheduled conferences does help get, get parents in the building. Uh, we had our meeting on March nineteenth with Barton Community College, um, about the opportunity for our students to go out to campus, you know, and, and get, um, start working towards certifications while in high school. I was very pleased with the outcome of that night. Mr. Kratos was there as well. We had about twenty students and, and, and parents there in attendance and we have a couple of students that are already enrolled to those programs for next year. So, um, looking forward to, to that program moving forward, so. We also will start city assessments, uh, this week. Um, eleventh grade will be taking science. They'll be doing that on this Wednesday. Eleventh grade will also be taking the history state assessments on April ninth. And then sophomores take language arts on April ninth and sixteenth, and then sophomores will be taking math on April eleventh and eighteenth. Prom is about a week and a half already, April thirteenth. Our, uh, music department will be traveling to Larned this coming Saturday for the regional contests. And then art will travel, travel to Fort Hay State University on April seventeenth for a show and then go to McPherson on April twenty-fourth for the league, uh, contest. And forensics will be traveling to Central Plains Saturday, April twentieth for their regional tournaments. Senior awards assembly is Tuesday, April twenty-third at nine fifteen. We're already to that point and we will have graduation before our next board meeting. So just to remind you guys that we'll have graduation on Sunday, May fifth. Uh, that'll be a two o'clock start and ask all you guys to come there again and help hand out diplomas. So, um, we will have, our school calendar does get bumped back, you know, pretty much a week next year. So graduation is on Sunday, May eleventh. Okay, I need to get that information out. I'm sure seniors to be next year are already starting to plan for graduation. So that will be Sunday, May eleventh for next year. So finals for seniors will be May first and second already this, this month, um, next month, I guess, sorry. And then, uh, which is only about six weeks, we have graduation practice, um, and Walk with Pride on Friday, May third. And then, like I said, graduation is Sunday, May fifth. So it'll be a whirlwind of, of a month. Um, April's crazy, really other than Wednesday, we'll have activities every single day. So it will fly by.
Do you want to go over, I know when I was a new board member, I was like, where do we go? Where do I meet? What time do I have to be there?
I'll be there, you know, about one forty at the latest probably and, uh, we'll just meet behind the stage on the north side of the gym. And I'll have the lineup there for us and really just sit up there and help hand out diplomas. Then I'll, if you can give Mr. Kratos names of students that you would like to hand your diploma, the diploma to, I'll make sure you get that, that diploma, so.
Yep, I think there'll be several of you that'll have, somebody will want to. So you can either get those names to me or Mr. Mason and, and we'll make sure that that, um, gets put together. Mr. Mason does a great job of kind of making the flow work, um, for, for you to kind of be there or, you know, it's no big deal just to step up and, and hand those out. So, so, yeah, so that works out really good. Any questions?
Thank you.
And you're always welcome. Um, and I've never said this before, you're welcome to be here at the district office, um, May third during, during the senior walk, you know, when they, when they make their way through town, uh, they do stop by here. Um, it's kind of their last bus stop before they head to the activity center to, to, to have lunch. And so you're, you're more than welcome to be here. Um, we never know when it's gonna be, but Mr. Mason and, and Diane does a good job of keeping us updated as to when. But it's usually in the morning, right?
They just get here, oh, ten thirty.
Yeah, yeah. So, so I mean, if you're, if you're here and available, they, you know, they, I talk to them, like I talk to my kids whenever they graduate, my, my high school kids, not my kids, but, um, whenever they graduate and they, you know, they're super appreciative of, of just the time that we take with them, so.
Mr. Kraft is not here. I think his is posted on here for you guys to read.
Yeah, he doesn't, doesn't have a lot. Um, just, spring activities just, just got kicked off, you know, late last week, um, with, with baseball, softball and track. Um, tennis, you know, I think, yes, was it Friday that they were, was their first one? Thursday was their first one also. Um, I think today golf was first, was their first one. Um, there are spring sports numbers there if you, if you are interested in that. And then, um, one thing that I do wanna say is we are hosting regional softball. So that has already been confirmed. So we are hosting regional softball, so, so.
Superintendent.
Um, just wanna update you on the turf and track. Tomorrow, uh, April second, Ralston, the head, um, turf installer for ATG will be back here, um, finishing out, putting those eight bags of rubber down, uh, that were left. Um, they do that every year. We've not had any issues with those bags, but they'll finish out getting that, uh, laid down tomorrow. As well as, um, we've got a slight wrinkle in the turf as well as a couple seams that we've got some questions about. So, um, and then there's a couple places on the, on the, um, runways, not, not necessarily on the track, but on the runways that we're having him take a look at as well. So, uh, he'll be out tomorrow to do that. Um, we finished up the shot put, uh, throwing areas with the red shale down for the quality landing area as opposed to having the shots land on asphalt. Um, and then those have been permanently marked, um, so that all we have to do is stick pins in the ground, run a string and, and, and spray paint it. So that, that was done over the weekend. Uh, discus, we're all but done with that area as well. I'm still waiting for a couple pieces, um, uh, that we ordered, uh, almost a month ago, um, to come in. It's been a little bit of a frustration, but we're getting there. And then I'm still working with ATG in regards to the, to the actual discus throwing area. Uh, the poor quality of workmanship on the concrete, uh, has been expressed and, and confirmed by ATG. And so we'll be working on that for, for next summer, uh, to get that, to get that replaced. Uh, we also are continuing. that, to get that replaced. We also are continuing to monitor the need for additional netting to protect, protect the south horizontal jumping pits. We've never had to worry about that before because we've never used the west long jump and triple jump pits. So, we're continuing to monitor that to make sure that that's a safe area to, to be during our track meets and practices. So, those are a couple things that we're continuing to look at on this new facility. Couple of planning items for summer projects. Like I talked before, obviously flooring, that's a, that's always something that we wanna try to keep updated. Tyler and the custodial crew do, do a great job of making sure that our flooring is, is well-done each summer. Clean, polished, waxed. You know, also making sure that it, and I'll present at the next, at the next meeting budgetary whether or not we're gonna continue with the parking areas on the north end of the activity center to, to re-seal that like we did on the, on the east side as well as some concrete work on the, on the front of the activity center. And then later this week, as a free service, Cornell Roofing is a company that has really gotten into the K-12 roofing area and they are coming out to do a look at all of our roofs and help us with the capital planning to prepare for, for roofing needs that we may have. One, and this, this kinda lays into insurance as well. One of the new things that insurances, property casualty insurances have been coming out with is if you have a roof that's fifteen years or older, they will not cover it. It's, there's no if, ands, or buts. They, you know, it doesn't matter how much the deductible is. It doesn't matter, you know, any of those. So, so roofing is, is something that we do need to make sure. Right now, per Tyler, most of our roofs are in pretty good shape, but Roosevelt is probably our highest priority in terms of roofing. So, so we'll get that report from them and move forward with that. And I'll have a, I'll have a breakdown of what we're looking at for next summer. So, this coming summer. It's not that far away.
For the concrete work that was at the shop put, who, who did it?
That, for the shop put area, that was Ray, Ray Christians.
Ray Christians did it and said it was one good?
What's that?
No.
No, 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 no. For the discus area, that was, that was a sub, a, a group of the ATG concrete, concrete workers. But it wasn't the same concrete workers that we dealt with earlier in the summer. It was done towards the end of the summer and it was a rush job. And you can tell. So.
Is it gonna pose any hazard to kids when they throw?
No. No. No.
Okay. Is that it for the superintendent report?
Yeah.
We'll move on to the legislative report then.
Okay. I do wanna inform you that Senate Bill three eighty-seven, which is, if you've been following along with any of the KSB documents or, or Facebook posts or anything, that is, that is the K-12 education budget bill. Again, as they're prone to do, they packed it with policy instead of just passing a clean budget bill. The other piece that is a good thing is they only passed it by two votes. Okay? So, that, that'll be important later. So, the House passed it. So, it's passed the House, it's passed the Senate, and now goes to conference committee and they will rework it. Couple items within that budget bill, let me get to my notes here. Couple items within that budget bill include the funding of seventy-five million dollars towards special education. Now, on the surface of that, everybody thinks that that sounds like a great idea. And I do, I do agree with you. Any, any help towards special education is going to be a positive. The issue with that is it takes away from our exemption for special education in our general fund. So, then in turn, it forces, it forces our LOB up. Because we're now counting the special education money in the general fund, the general fund is directly tied to the LOB because it's approximately thirty percent. LOB is thirty percent, which then pushes the LOB up. And then the state legislature then has put in there that there is a mandatory transfer from LOB into special education. Now, the issue with that is LOB is local option budget. That is our supplemental general fund. That is assessed by the county per you addressing the mills. So, that is local funds, not state funds. Does that, does that make sense to everybody? So, what they have done is they, they have said, we're gonna give you seventy-five million dollars worth of money, but we're gonna force you to, to raise taxes. Even if you keep your mills the same, it's still going to raise, it's still going to raise the taxes because now we're counting special education money in the general fund that has not been counted in there. Okay? And then they're going to force us to transfer money out of the LOB into special education. Is that, is that, everybody kinda following? I'm, I'm really kinda learning here.
Are they gonna have a revote on this or anything?
So, so the House passed it that way. The Senate passed it as a clean seventy-five million into special education. So, now what they will do is they will go together and do conference committee. And that will, there will be back and forth as to what the actual bill that will go to the governor will look like. So, the, the House does not really have, the reason that I brought it, it only passed by two votes, because the House had twelve Republicans that went against party leadership and voted against the SB three eighty-seven. So, people are hearing that they don't wanna see a bunch of policy in their, in their budget bills. The money is there. They have, they have excess of over a billion dollars. So, the money is there to fund K-12 education. They continue to put policy in that. The other piece is at-risk funding. They continue to add additional criteria as well as limiting factors on how we can use our at-risk funds. We have an excess of at-risk funds because we have a large population of free lunch students. We have a large population of students that we can use those funds for, but we are so limited on the ways that we can use the at-risk funds, it's hard for us to do that. And they're making it more and more difficult to justify using those funds. So, we're, we're continuing to try to work through that process as well. So, so there, there's still a lot of work to be done. I would encourage you to, to watch, if you're a Facebook watcher, KSB has a, an evening live video or their podcast every Friday evening is very good. Or, yeah, every Friday evening is very good to kinda stay up on some of this. But tho- those are kinda some of the major issues with SB three eighty-seven. There are a couple other things within that bill as well, but those are, those are things that we can, we can work through. And we're not planning on selling any buildings, so it's not as, as big of a factor on that one. But, but the, the, the main thing that we continue to see is that, and if, if you know our state representative, I would encourage you to reach out to her and express concerns about how things are done. You know, I, I seem to be the lone voice that is in opposition to what is being done. So, I don't know. I, I guess I just, maybe I got too much time on my hands. So, I, I email her whenever I don't agree with, with what's going on. But the other thing that I do wanna point out, which was a huge positive, last Tuesday, we had nine students from, from Hoyington go to, to the House, to the, to the Capitol as representatives of Zero Reasons Why. Zero Reasons Why is a, is an organization to, to break down the stigma of, of mental health and to basically express that there are, there are zero reasons why that somebody should con- consider suicide. Our students did an excellent job of, of representing Hoyington High School. We had one other student from Barton County that, that was part of our group as well. The Center has done an amazing job of supporting Zero Reasons Why. And, you know, really Hoyington High School, even through transition from, from Jen to Denny this year, has continued to be a, a strong organization. A quarter of our students at the high school are a part of Zero Reasons Why. And so, they were well-represented at, well, well-represented both by speaking and their actions at the Capitol last Tuesday. And they were part of Y-Link, which was over five hundred students at the Capitol with student advocacy groups. Zero Reasons Why were started in Johnson County and Zero Reasons Why as a whole was honored on the House, not the House floor, but the Senate floor during their opening ceremonies on Tuesday. Our group was in the, in the upper gallery and the Johnson County group was in the, in the VIP gallery and was given a proclamation honoring Zero Reasons Why as a whole. So, our kids. Our kids have done a great job of, of bringing that to Barton County and the surrounding area. So, sorry. Didn't realize that would happen. So, sorry. Kenley was involved. So, so it was pretty cool. So, okay. That's all I got on that.
Okay. Thank you. Move on to item I, board member reports. Anybody have anything to? No? Okay. Move on to item ten, consideration of district personnel. Do we need to go into executive?
I, I mean, I just have the-
Maybe just to kinda-
Yeah.
-discuss it real quick?
Yeah.
You go fifteen minutes.
Okay.
All right. I move, we go into executive session for fifteen minutes pursuant to discussing non-elected personnel under the KOMA exception for the purpose of discussing nominations and resignations. With Mr. Kratos present, the open meeting will resume in the boardroom at, I'll just say nine o'clock. Okay. Second. It's been moved in second at all in favor. Passes seven zero. All right. Thank you, guys.